Abby's trying to get Al on the phone.
Well, we are. We are recording, so. Mr. McGary, you can fire it up and then we'll look for Al when he gets on.
Okay. We're going to call the Troy Planning Commission meeting for Wednesday, May 27th, 2020. Call to order. Do we have roll call, please?
Mr. Walkie.
Here.
Mayor.
Yes.
This is Erlich.
Yeah.
Mr. Titterington.
Yeah.
Mr. Westmeyer.
Here.
Mr. Cappers. Mr. McGary.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Okay, next item is review of the minutes from the May 13th, 2020 meeting. Are there any comments or are there motion for adoption?
I'll move.
Have a motion.
Second.
So, all in favor? Or I guess we go very roll call, I'm sorry, Sue.
We can do that. For the minutes, Mayor.
Yes.
This is Erlich.
Yes.
Mr. Titterington.
Yes.
Westmeyer.
Yes.
Mr. McGary.
Yes.
Mr. Walkie.
Yes.
Approved.
Okay, the first item for business is a petition for vacation of a 14-foot wide unimproved alley west of 124 Ash Street and 130 and 1/2 Ash Street. Does staff have a report?
Yes, we do, thank you. As you said, this is a vacation plat for the alley that runs to the west of 124 Ash Street and 130 and 1/2 Ash Street. Both of those properties are owned by the Lincoln Community Center and they have signed a petition for that. The city does not have any varied infrastructure in the alley and we do recommend approval. This would be an action, sorry, to go before city council, so your approval request is to city council and it's contingent upon the city obtaining ownership of 124 Ash Street, which is what we've discussed with Lincoln Community Center project.
Okay, the role of commission is to make a recommendation to council to either vacate or not vacate correctly?
That's correct.
I'm not clear on the contingent on the city obtaining 124 Ash Street. Could you explain that, please?
Yes, so Lincoln Community Center has a parcel at 110 Ash Street where it's located at that is owned by the city of Troy. They also have, right now, is a house located at 124 Ash Street. Those parcels are supposed to be combined and then given into the ownership of the city of Troy. That's why the contingency is there. They can't do that until the alley is vacated. So this is the first step in that process, that's why we ask right.
That's what I'm, there's. Yeah, you can get it on Zoom, I can send you the link to it.
Cappers.
Yes, I'm sorry for the delay.
Yeah, we're recording it too.
Usually the court gives you 15 minutes before you hold a contempt. Jim, you've been unseated.
I will, I will excuse you and turn the gavel over to Mr. Cappers.
What matter are you on?
We're on the first order of business, item number three.
Okay, have you heard the staff report yet?
Yes.
Okay. Was there any further discussion? We just started. I'll move to recommend a council vacation subject to ownership of 124 Ash Street by the city of Troy. Is there second to that motion?
I will second.
I don't know who did the second. Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
This is Erlich.
Yes.
Mr. Titterington.
Yes.
Mr. Westmeyer.
Yes.
Mr. Cappers.
Yes.
Mr. McGary.
Yes.
Mr. Walkie.
Yes.
Mayor.
Yes.
Approved.
Okay, the next matter of business is the historic district application for 24 South Short Street for replacement of existing vinyl siding. Does staff have a report?
Yes, sir, we do. The applicant requests the planning commission to review the siding modification to this property located at 24 South Short Street. This property is owned R5 single-family residential. The HOI form lists property as 1/2-story bungalow-style property constructed in 1919 with substantial brick wall and piers on the front porch, a central gable roof dormer, original windows, doors, and artificial siding was added at later date. This property is not listed on the National Historic Registry. The applicant is requesting a replacement of existing vinyl siding of primary structure and the rear accessory structure. The proposed replacement will be a fiber cement siding or also known as hardy board for the siding and the trim for the windows, fascia, and soffits. This will replace the existing vinyl siding and trim that currently exists on the property. The proposed color for the main body of the home, which will be eight feet high, patterned style in a bungalow beige Sherwin-Williams 7511. The remainder will be Gale Force Sherwin-Williams 7605. The shutters, trim, soffit, fascia, gutters are to be installed in the color steely gray Sherwin-Williams SW7664. For the accessory building, the colors will be in reverse with the main portion of the siding being the Gale Force color, the trim in bungalow beige, and the gutters in steely gray. Staff recommends approval for the proposed alterations. These proposed alterations are in keeping with the historic nature in the district. Proposed style of the building product is more appropriate than the existing vinyl siding and the alteration does not alter any historic or architectural features of this property.
Any questions of staff? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I will move to approve.
Motion to approve, is there support for the motion?
Support.
Okay, Mrs. Erlich, second it. Any question? Please call the roll.
Mr. Titterington.
Yes.
Mr. Westmeyer.
Yes.
Mr. Cappers.
Yes.
Mr. McGary.
Yes.
Mr. Walkie.
Yes.
Mayor.
Yes.
This is Erlich.
Yes.
Approved.
Okay, next we have a historic district application for 302 West Franklin Street for replacement of existing vinyl siding and trim. Does staff have a report?
Yes, sir. So the applicant is requesting the planning commission to review the siding modification of this property located at 302 West Franklin Street. This property is also owned R5 single-family residential. OHI form lists the property originally constructed in 1869, later alterations. This is a two-story vernacular residence. The structure remains or retains its vernacular form but has been heavily altered. The exterior has been covered with vinyl siding and the windows trimmed in aluminum wrap. Has porch on the north side that may be partially original. This property is also not on the historic registry. The applicant is requesting the replacement of the existing vinyl siding and trim with new vinyl siding and trim for the entire structure. Colors being proposed for the main body of the house is the seagrass color. The trim, corners, soffit, fascia will be in the color gray planal. For the gable ends of the roof, they're requesting harbor stone and that will also have a cedar-shaped style siding, which you can see in the attachments in your packet. Staff does recommend approval of proposed alterations. These will not adversely affect the street scale. The structure is already negatively altered with vinyl siding and this replacement will just provide needed maintenance for the structure. The alteration will not alter any of the architectural features of this property.
Any questions of staff? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion. Move for approval. Who's the second by, please? Okay, any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Westmeyer.
Yes.
Mr. Cappers.
Yes.
Mr. McGary.
Yes.
Mr. Walkie.
Yes.
Mayor.
Yes.
This is Erlich.
Yes.
Mr. Titterington.
Yes.
True.
Okay, next we have a historic district application for 103 and 1/2 East Main Street for the addition of a metal-framed vinyl awning over the second floor deck. Does staff have a report?
Yes, sir. Again, this applicant is requesting the proposed modifications in the building located at 103 and 1/2 East Main Street. This property is owned B3 Central Business District. The OHI form lists this property as a three-story high Victorian Italianite-style commercial property constructed in 1871. Noted as a significant contributor to the historic district and in commercial for the city. This property is on the National Historic Registry. The applicant is requesting the addition of a metal-framed vinyl over the second floor deck, which is on the North Walnut Street side portion of the building. This proposed awning is a vinyl material and will be in the 546 stone gray color to match the exterior of the building. The overall size will be 10 feet by 16 feet. And for reference, this is the same material and structure type that is currently installed at the Caroline Restaurant there near the square. The awning will provide some coverage for the existing second floor deck and for a little bit of protection to the elements to the entryway on the first floor. Staff recommends approval for this modification. The alterations are in keeping with the historic nature of the district. These alterations are in keeping with current building color and this also does not alter any of the historical features of this property.
What's there now?
Currently on that side where the proposed awning is located, there's nothing there. It's just an exposed deck, second floor deck off the, I guess, entryway in the elevator.
We ready?
Directly underneath is the entryway for the building.
I'm sorry, somebody broke in. So there was a deck there before?
There currently is a second porch or a second story deck that partially covers the first floor entryway.
Right.
The awning will be above that giving some shelter from the elements on that second floor deck.
Gotcha.
First floor.
Any other questions of staff? Do I have, hear a motion?
I'll move to approve.
Is there support for the motion?
Or.
Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Cappers.
Yes.
Mr. McGary.
Yes.
Mr. Walkie.
Yes.
Mayor.
Yes.
Mr. Titterington. This is Erlich.
Yes.
Mr. Westmeyer.
Yes.
Approved.
Next, we have another historic district application, this one for 221 South Market Street for the installation of a wall sign. Does staff have a report?
Yes, sir. This one may be a little more familiar. In a previous planning commission meeting, this sign was actually denied. The applicant is Carrie Howard of the Marocchi Salon and Spa. She's asking the planning commission to remove or to approve a wall sign for 221 South Market Street. This property is also B3 in the Central Business District. The OHI form describes this building as a two-story vernacular commercial building with gable roof over half the building and a flat roof over the remaining. All trim and windows do look original, three-story fronts survive in close original form and this property is not listed on the National Historic Registry. This is, as I stated before, a resubmission of a previously discussed sign. The proposed sign is 15.75 square feet and is also under the permitted allowance for this tenant for this building. This was a previously approved as far as staff as a sign request, but doesn't cover the historic approval. The material is an aluminum composite with a black background, white lettering, and a jalapeno-colored strip to match the existing signage on the front. This sign will be installed flush to the wall on the north side, which faces their off-street park. Staff recommends approval based on the Sign Will Me, the City of Troy Sign Code requirements. The proposed sign complements the current colors of the building and existing signage on the building and the sign is cohesive with the existing elements of this building.
Any questions of staff? This is where we objected to the color of the sign in the past. You're right, I think this more complements the building. Anyone want to make motion?
I'll move for approval.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. McGary.
Yes.
Mr. Walkie.
Yes.
Mayor Oda.
Yes.
This is Erlich.
Yes.
Mr. Titterington.
Yes.
Mr. Westmeyer.
Yes.
Mr. Cappers.
Yes.
Approved.
Okay, next we have a rezoning application. Does staff have a report?
Yes, sir. The applicant Steve Brunz is requesting the planning commission to consider allowing the rezoning of 1375 South Union Street on slot DOA dash 106648. The applicant is requesting that the zoning parcel. Free. The applicant is requesting that the zoning district of M3 General Industrial District be applied to this parcel. The land is consisting of 6.1421 acres and is currently a vacant parcel previously annexed into the city on January 22nd, 2019. The other surrounding zoning districts are county zoning to the west of I1 Light Industrial. South county zoning is B1 Highway Business. To the east is City of Troy, M2 Light Industrial. And to the north is also City of Troy, M3 General Industrial. The applicant has submitted to place the required, I'm sorry, the application was submitted as a requirement for the City of Troy to have a zoning district applied to this property. The zoning code describes M3 General Industrial District as designated to accommodate a broad range of manufacturing, servicing, and processing uses. In your packet are attached maps showing the surrounding zoning districts and properties within a 250-feet radius of the land proposed to be reclassified. For the comprehensive plan, figure 14-4, this property is designated to be zoned as industrial use. The annexation of property proposed zoning district will allow for the new business or expansion of the industrial sector in the city of Troy. The industrial zoning district will lend to accomplishing several goals within the comprehensive plan. Due to the straightforward nature of the rezoning request compliance with the City of Troy Plan and the fact this city council is required to hold a public hearing, if this request proceeds on, staff does not recommend a public hearing. Staff's opinion is that the proposed rezoning is consistent with both the desired goals of the comprehensive plan, surrounding uses, and zoning districts. And the proposed rezoning provides an available industrial zone property for reutilization. Staff does recommend, the planning commission recommend approval for the proposed rezoning from county zoning I2 General Industrial to City of Troy zoning M3 General Industrial District.
Is this the old Deltex Polymers property?
This is actually south of it. It used to be the Troy Wood Pallet Recycling.
It was the old Warham location from back in the 70s, I believe.
The Texas saloon? Is this why Troy?
Yeah, there was, yeah, there was a saloon there and some dance hall and.
Okay. Any questions of Mr. Cappers? Well, the first matter to come before the commission is to whether or not we need a public hearing on this matter. I'll move that we not have a public hearing.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion on that issue? Please call the roll.
And this is on not having a public hearing?
Keep in mind, an affirmative vote means we're not having a public hearing.
Mr. Walkie.
Yes.
Mayor.
Yes.
I'm sorry, I cannot hear.
Yes, yes.
This is Erlich.
Yes.
Mr. Titterington.
Yes.
Mr. Westmeyer.
Yes.
Mr. Cappers.
Yes.
Mr. McGary.
Yes.
Motion passes. Commission will not hold a public hearing.
Okay, now to the main issue at hand as to whether or not we want to make a recommendation to council. Does anybody have any questions of staff on this issue? Anybody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we recommend approval by council.
Okay. And is there support for that motion recommending of a zoning?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Mayor Oda.
Yes.
This is Erlich.
Yes.
Mr. Titterington.
Yes.
Mr. Westmeyer.
Yes.
Mr. Cappers.
Yes.
Mr. McGary.
Yes.
Mr. Walkie.
Yes.
Motion is passed to recommend to council.
The next item on the agenda is a consideration of our past action at the last meeting and asking us to reconsider the historic district application for the demolition of the residential and garage structures located at 126 South Cherry Street. Does commission want to take such action?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Walkie.
At our last meeting, I was the one that expressed, well, myself and at least one other member expressed concern about the ability of both sides to the issue to have a fair hearing. Therefore, I made a motion to indefinitely delay commission action. However, in fairness to all sides, I believe the planning commission should resume consideration of this issue. I'm viewing the process that I'm proposing as a starting point for discussion and would welcome any amendments by members of the commission. I would like to make a motion to include the issue of 126 South Cherry Street on our next agenda with the following procedures in effect. First, the proponents and the opponents to the demolition shall select a primary and up to two secondary representatives. The primary representatives shall have a maximum of five minutes to make their presentations. Secondary representatives shall each be given a maximum of three minutes. Presentations shall alternate, beginning with the opposition to demolition. The commission may ask questions of either side of the issue. Questions and answers shall not be deducted from their allotted time. No time limit shall apply to city staff or the planning commission. Proponent representatives shall be chosen by the First United Methodist Church. If the opposition is unable to select representatives, I suggest the attorney for Ms. Owens, which is Mr. McGraw, shall be the primary representative and he shall select two additional representatives. If either side declines the procedure established by the commission, that side will not be given the opportunity to speak before the commission meeting.
Okay. You made a motion. In order for it to consider that, we'll need a second to that motion.
I'll second that.
I'll second.
Okay. Now let's, let's discuss it.
Can I ask who made the second?
I did. Jim McGary.
Okay, thank you.
Somewhere in that motion, did you mention anything about the aggregation of time between the parties?
Again, it was, if I missed it, it's each primary representative shall be given a maximum of five minutes to present their position. Secondary representatives shall each be given a maximum of three minutes.
Okay.
Presentations shall alternate, beginning with the opposition to the demolition. I think I may have skipped a paragraph or two there.
So it's your, you're saying it's implied that there would be no aggregation of the, of the time for the party?
No, no yielding of time. Again, primary representatives, five minutes each. Secondary representatives, which will be a maximum of two from each side, three minutes each.
Okay, right. Well, I thought that was very thoughtful, Larry, so, yeah, I like it. And any questions of, any, any other comments by the planning commission?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mr. Titterington.
I, I'm fully in support. Whether I seconded or thirded that motion, I don't know. My one concern is that throughout this whole process to date, we've not had a presentation from the applicant. I know there's some feeling that the staff report represents the applicant's viewpoint, but I know that the staff was only following the zoning code, the appropriate section of the code and came to the conclusion that they came using the application's wording and background, but did not make a presentation on behalf of the applicant in the applicant's words with the applicant's feelings and the ability to answer any other questions that the planning commission might have had. So I, I agree with Larry that, you know, alternating and starting the testimony with opposition and then going down from there is, is appropriate. But I guess I'm wondering if the applicant shouldn't begin by with a three or five-minute presentation on what it is they want to do in their words and then get into the 553333 as, as Larry suggested. I guess we can discuss that. I could make a motion to amend, but I'd rather hear from, from members of the commission.
I'll start out. I, I think that if we added any more time to the, for the applicant to submit their proposal, it would be, it would weigh more heavily in their favor. They had the opportunity to say whatever they wanted to say when they made the application to start out with. For the last meeting, we encouraged all parties to go ahead and submit written testimony and they did. And I don't, really don't think there's any other reason to go ahead and permit the applicant further time on the day is to go ahead and make a presentation for the planning commission. I think what Larry's proposed is fair and just. Anybody else have a comment?
I would, I would agree with Patrick. I think the applicant should have the ability to make their additional comment.
Anybody else?
Mr. Chairman, the, the correspondence we received was overwhelmingly by the opposition. I, I was rather taking back a little bit to the fact that the applicant, nor its advocates or the members of the church, did not offer more written comments as far as support. Rather than disrupting and giving preference to time on this, you know, I think we should welcome the fact that the church has more to say other than what's in their application that they can provide written documentation to us, just like the opposition has.
We can accept that written documentation up until noon of the day of the next meeting.
Right. Well, hopefully before noon.
Yeah.
140-some pages is a lot.
Yeah. Any other comments from planning commission members?
I think the information provided to us by the applicant was, I'll go back to the user, were overwhelming. We've been given a lot of facts from the applicant. I think what Mr. Walkie is proposing is fair, the way he has proposed it. It would satisfy me that people could express both sides of the situation.
Mr. Chair.
Who, somebody's saying something here.
The PT.
Speak up, please.
Patrick.
Yes, go ahead.
All right, so thank you for all your comments and I would just call the question then.
Is the question on the second or is there a question on the original motion?
Call the motion, call the question.
Okay, we'll close comments. Please call the roll on the motion to stand.
Again, is, are we making a, are we voting on the original motion or on the amendment that Mr. Titterington made?
Yeah, I did not make an amendment. I wanted some discussion first. Based on that discussion, then I'm calling the original.
Okay.
Question on the original motion that you made.
Okay, so we're going to call the roll on the motion Mr. Walkie proposed. Go ahead and call the roll.
This is Erlich.
Yes.
Mr. Titterington.
Yes.
Mr. Westmeyer.
Yes.
Mr. Cappers.
Yes.
Mr. McGary.
Yes.
Mr. Walkie.
Yes.
Mayor Oda.
Yes.
Motion is carried.
Okay, let's talk procedure. This will be on the agenda for our next meeting. How will we get the information out to the parties and to the public? Giving them time also to go ahead and submit written materials.
I would suggest that the staff reach out to both the applicant and to the, the opposition. We have. We have emails from them. They also had an ongoing correspondence with Mr. McGraw. So, one way or the other, we can make sure that they know what the rules are and hopefully get a list of those who are going to speak prior to the meeting.
Would also be appropriate to put this information on our agenda for next meeting?
Sure.
Why don't we do that, too? The agenda becomes part of our public record, right?
Correct.
Why don't we do that? Anybody else have any suggestions, carries, or comments? Staff have anything else to come before the commission today?
We do have one item. It just kind of came in this morning. We were not aware of it, obviously, until a couple hours ago, but I'll let Robert go ahead and discuss this issue.
Thank you. Yes, sir. We were contacted by a property owner, the Marings, at 210 East Main Street. There was a mix-up with their contractor as far as trying to get a roof replacement done on the home. It is a, it says the property is 210 East Main Street. It's in the B3 Central Business District. It is a historic home built in 1847, and it is not on the National Historic Places Registry. The applicant is asking to replace their roof that is currently on the home. It is a three-tab light gray asphalt shingle roof. This roof has been deteriorated. She mentioned that they have a couple roof leaks. They were going to apply for the planning commission, and their contractor apparently got them ahead of schedule, and the materials arrived on site today. They're planning on installing later today or this week, given the weather. So, we tried to get it in front of you. What they're planning on going with is an Owens Corning Oak Ridge. It's an architectural-style shingle, so it's a little bit different, a little more depth and contrast than a three-tab asphalt shingle. But again, it's still an asphalt shingle, and it will change the color from light gray to what they are calling an aged cedar, which is a light to medium brown. It will match the house a little bit more. This home is the one that's next to the police parking lot. That's the yellow color. It also has some brown trim on it. She did mention that they are not going to do the garage, the accessory structure. The light gray roof will stay there, but they are going to try and coat it with a dye or a tint to match it to the home. So, this is just for the primary structure. It is an Owens Corning architectural asphalt shingle in overhaged cedar color.
Okay. Have they actually made an application?
They are, they haven't filled out a formal application with us, but they are trying, we're trying to help and get them on the, an approval so they can get and continue to make the repairs. And we have seen samples. Couldn't get that out to everybody in time.
I have a little problem taking action on anything that we don't even have an application before us to take action. I also sympathize with the owner of the property. That really putting us in a pinch. Anybody else have any comments or questions of staff?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mr. Titterington.
So, I want to go back to your earlier comment that they would reshingle the house in the brown, but they would leave the garage as the current.
For now, yes.
And what's that mean for now?
What they hope to do is try and get, have this contractor come in and do a tint onto the existing shingle.
Gentlemen, could you speak a little louder, please?
I'm sorry. Let me try a different mic here. All right, is that better?
A little bit.
Okay. Anyway, my concern is between the house and the roof shingles not matching, because they're saying that they're going to keep the roof, the garage shingles gray and only replace the house shingles. Now, Robert is saying that they're going to have the contractor come back and basically paint, tint, whatever, the garage to match the house.
Correct. The shingles on the garage are not in as bad a shape as the primary structure, hence the roof leaks that they have in the home, and that's why they're doing just the primary structure at this time.
So, roofing, a roofing company has, if the roofing company has the ability to come in and coat and get longer use out of a good roof, I don't have any problem with that. If they can coat it to where it kind of, it matches the color.
You're saying, though, that you don't know that they're going to be able to do that, that they're going to come back and dry it, or are they definitely going to do that?
Make the motion contingent upon the happening.
Yeah, we can do that. To answer your question, they're looking at the option to do the coating. If not, they'll come back in with the same shingle style as on the house.
So, they want to do the house?
They're going, they need to do the house now.
Try to do the.
And will, yeah.
May come back and just do this.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. Maybe I missed it. Is the garage attached or unattached to the house?
It is detached.
Thank you.
And not really visible from the road.
Yes, it is set back off the road quite a bit, and is somewhat screened.
Is there a provision in the historic district portion of our code dealing with emergency repairs so that they could repair the roof and then back to us with a proper application and information?
There is. There's a section that allows them on, as you stated, on emergency measures where they can repair the roof to stabilize and then come back before the planning commission. If that's what you guys wish to have happen, we can apply that section as well.
Well, I don't want them to suffer any more damage than they already have with this leaking roof, but I'm still not real clear on what we're being asked to approve.
Well, I mean, we, because of the rush of trying to get this information here and the rest of the day, we, I haven't been able to get back with them to get an actual official application. I was, we were hoping to get that in time. I mean, we can go get one if that's, if you, that would make you feel more comfortable for the next meeting if they want to do the emergency repairs on it and then ask, come back at the next meeting for the actual official approval. I mean, at this, at this time, it's... The contractor will be there probably tomorrow to start this roof. We're trying to at least get, get some feeling on what, what the commission would like on this, this shingle style and color.
Anybody else have any questions or comments of staff?
Questions?
Ms. Oda?
Are they able to get the thing submitted by tomorrow?
Yes, I can get an application done by today.
And let them go ahead. They can get us the application.
I think, Mr. Cappers, and I kind of agree that you're saying we're approving something without seeing the official application prior to approving it. And I agree, usually with the application, we will get a picture of the current structure to be replaced, or in this case, roof. We will get a picture of what the new roof shingle will look like, but we see it, but we're here. They're virtual, so. I get that point. I understand, Mr. Cappers, your approach that, you know, let them, let them do the emergency repairs, and then we just include this on the next planning commission agenda with their application and approve it, ratify it, whatever we want to call it. Is that what you're suggesting?
That's, yeah, one of my suggestions. The other suggestion is, well, I hope there's not a whole lot of people listening to this, but, you know, they can, if they can go ahead and take emergency care to fix their roof, contractor gets on top of the roof and puts their new roof on, and then they make the application. You know, we have approved things retroactively in the past. They must be concerned, however, that if that action is taken, that there might be some review that they don't want to be reviewed. You know, if Mr. Titterington's position is that, hey, they've got to come up with the same type of shingle on the garage, they may have to put the same type of shingle on the garage, or else, you know, we'd have to take some action on their emergency roof that was put on. You understand what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Well, as I understand, they can go ahead and make the emergency repairs and then come to us and be at risk of having to remove it and start over. Is that correct?
Yeah. Saying that, you said it much more succinctly than I did.
And my, on the other encouragement there would be that hopefully within the next two weeks, they will know whether they can tint the roof the same color or not, and we can answer, we can clarify the garage roof at the same time as we address formally the primary application.
Then if they take that action, it'd be certainly nice to find a location in town or at least a picture of a roof that was so tinted. I've never heard of that process before.
I haven't seen it here, so can't speak to it.
So, any other questions or comments? We don't have an app.
Sorry. So, they will take emergency action to repair the house roof with the risk that they may have to replace the garage in essence, but we're definitely going to get an application at some point before the next meeting to officially approve.
Yeah, well, either that or enforcement will go out and say that, you know, they're a violation of the building code in historic district. We're not suggesting to them that they start work before planning commission approval. I'm just saying that that's sometimes what happens. So, unless any action was to be taken, we don't take any action on this because there's no application to take action on.
That's all we have.
Planning commission have anything else that they want to discuss? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Close? Okay, we stand adjourned. Thank you.